Football league, so another one like.
Pretty small.
Well, I can read some stuff in the background, it depends on what it is, I mean, we do new checks. Well, here it is in the fall, so I'm gonna allow you to have the.
Hey, I've got my baby. Three weeks tomorrow, man.
Yeah, I, I feel you, I got to leave. So you, so you can milk four to five hours a night, which isn't bad at the time, so that's good.
Mine's up to this Friday with eleven weeks.
Beautiful.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. You know, the bad. Okay. You don't want to say it's your animal country. We think that it was from the United States, they did it as well, right?
Those are my last names.
Okay. We'll try to see if you have. Yeah, I do. Yeah. I worked on that last night. I, I've worked on that last night. Yes, that was my Labor Day job. I did. Yeah, they have.
Alright folks, we'll go ahead and get started with our study session, it is six thirty-one P M. You can stand, you can play by your own places. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please.
Elsa, number one, young. Reese. Jackson here, Lawler. David here, Brunch. And Mayor Snyder here.
So our study session, this is the first item that will require approval at the regular meeting. So first, honey, the agenda is to approve regulations twenty twenty-four thirty-six. Um, this is to approve the agreement for Eagle. Senator Snyder?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, hopefully, we're probably talking about our large water program project. We have received the formal grant through the program Eagle, just having the different funding that we are receiving from them. Um, seven million, over, a little over seven million grants. Um, the one point nine million Q W I grants, and then the five million G W S R F. Well, um, attorney of justice has reviewed this agreement and it is in good form and brought them into the first line.
Do we have any questions, or you're sitting there or attending? Next, we'll be asked to approve the purchase ring on evidence twenty twenty-four oh four. Uh, this is in regards to the public camping ordinance. Um, this came up two meetings ago. And Mayor Captain Jackson asked for it to be tabled so that things could get put in place before approval. Um, so did we have any movement on that?
So, yes, um, Mayor. Um, the movement on that is that with down at E D C, they hired Pastor Jim Hertz. To work for six months, they assigned him to be able to go out and find the different cohesive. Um, because they got cohesive plan for that business everybody for a different type of housing. And then also to do a survey on like how many homes people who do have. And I know with that survey, I know I spoke a little bit to Cullen, I guess still my concern, even though that he's doing that. Um, it's just what's saying, what's being said in the ordinance, Kiff. So I guess I'm not saying do not go, no, we, that we should do something, is what I'm saying. But I am concerned about the fines for people that are already homeless. I understand you have a job, okay, that you need to do. So you need to have some backing from us so that you can do that. I still have a concern, uh, where do they go? And you explained to me a few things. So I'm just saying if we can discuss and work something out where the maybe the fines decreased for a few months. But yet you're still able to, you know, move them where you need to move them because there's an ordinance saying you have to move, you can't stay here. But just find them, that's kind of where I'm at. So, but if you can shed some light, uh, Cullen to me. Uh, and then also yourself, Kiff, so that helps me. And maybe others that might not be here or whatever, and then also I know Scott, he had a concern as well, so, uh, yeah.
So, I probably get half a dozen to a dozen complaints a year about homeless people or people camping places. Um, I had one maybe three months ago where a tent was being put up literally across the street from my house. Not that I care, but the neighbor cared, who came marching up my driveway yelling at me that I wasn't going to allow that to happen. And I was kind of like, well, we wouldn't talk to them. They moved along somewhere else, that wasn't a problem for them at all. And that's usually what happens, we talk to people, they move along. Okay, we don't have any ability to tell people they can't camp there, and the property across the street from my house belongs to the city, so. If they pitch a tent on that property, they could stay there as long as they wanted to stay there because it's not a park, it's just city property. Um, anyplace there's city property right now, we don't have a way of enforcing, you know, camping on that property. You have city property next to your house, you could put a whole dent city there and there's nothing we, I can do about it. Because it's legal. Um, anyways, like I said, city property, the only place we can enforce that is in our parks, because we do have a rule in our parks, we can't be there after dark. So that's easy for us to report, because it can't be in the park, but any other city property, I mean, they could pitch a tent off the city off for that matter, there's not really anything that we can do about it. And so, this is a way of us being able to enforce that and saying you can't do it. I see any fines, I see any criminal activities as a last resort. Somebody who refuses to comply, refuses to do what we've asked. Um, and, and refuses any help from the city in which it perform. That, that would be how we would enforce this, that's why there's, there has to be some type of enforcement in the end, because if there isn't, then they just say, yeah, there's nothing we can do about it. And so that's, that's how I see this now, I may not always be the chief, I obviously probably won't be the one out there enforcing it when it happens. I do have some say in that, but officers have a lot of authority in the enforcement of the law, lots of laws there. So I do have the same concerns, I, you know, a- and because it's the local ordinance, it would be up to the city attorney to prosecute it, so it would be along those lines. And what we expect from the city attorney to do that as well, it's not an ordinance that the prosecutor would prosecute. So it would be completely Cullen's discretion on where it goes from that point, so. Uh, but I hope that explains a little better, this is not something I necessarily want, I just only get a lot of complaints about these types of things.
Yes, I, I understand, and I, I do, and I can't hear, so I'm saying something differently, not fashion or, but this, how people are mentioning. So as we go forward and we work to put this ordinance in place, that we don't use it for anything else, as someone just in the wrong place a bit all the time, if they're not. Or whatever, they need you, and you know, you know how that can happen. I'm not saying anything else, but you must know that.
Right, yeah.
So we just want to make sure that we don't reach this ordinance and we do otherwise.
Right.
Because then the officer really have the authority and they just let you kind of.
So Cullen, Cullen's gonna say, are you gonna explain this to misdemeanors? Most of our misdemeanors, most of our local misdemeanors, we can no longer arrest for unless we can show that the person is refusing to comply at some point. Um, and so it'd be rare that this would be something we'd arrest for, it would be something we'd cite him for, issue a citation, and they would have a court day if that, if it got to that point. Obviously, if what they're doing is, uh, something that we, we have to get them out of there at that time, they, they could be arrested for it, but that's a very rare thing that could happen with this as well.
Okay, I don't know.
Yeah, so, I mean, to, to the chief's point, I mean, the, the new law basically says there's a, it, it, with the exception of, I think it's like five or six circumstances that are set for that statute. There's a presumption that they could be issued a citation, so it's just kind of like, okay, you need to move along, here's your citation. Um, as it relates to the fine, what we use is just the default provision from the city charter as to what the penalty is. It's not that they're going to get a five hundred dollar fine, that's the maximum fine that the court would impose. When somebody is indigent or homeless or, or both, um, it's very, very common for the court to waive the fine and only impose what's known as the status term minimum. So, by way of example, I was in court today, and we had somebody that was charged with assault battery and disorderly conduct fighting. Um, person was indigent, they pled guilty, and the judge said, okay, I'm not going to impose a fine, but I've got to impose the state mandatory fee and the crime victim fee, which. You know, was like a hundred and twenty-five dollars, because they're required by law to do that, but they waived the fine because they're indigent. So, in a situation, if it got to the boiling point, charge, there's a male legitimately indigent, I don't foresee a court actually imposing upon it. They may just impose the state mandatory minimums that they have to do for any misdemeanor. Um, but obviously, somebody has to demonstrate their indigence. They can't just come in and say they're indigent, they have to, they have to, yeah, you know, not working on social security or on S S I disability or Medicaid or something like that. But I don't see a, I don't see a court imposing an actual fine on somebody that's legitimately indigent, unless they're like a habitual offender, they're coming back just to. Throwing the most of authority or something like that, but it sounds like Scott only gets a handful of these a year, so.
My concern is, I mean, Battle Creek's had ten cities, Camazoo's had ten cities. Um, I would expect with the ruling from the Supreme Court, as if, I sent you, I think I sent everybody our article in California, where they're actually going after all their homeless and trying to clear out their ten cities as well. If we don't have something to protect us, all these other cities are going to do this, and this is the place that everybody's going to come because they know they can do it here. And I, I just think we're a step behind, and we don't have something on the books that allows us to stop this before it starts. Um, if they never start here, no, but I've seen it already, we've had people come here, we've had people try to camp here. Uh, I, I don't want people coming here to do that, people that are here that are homeless that need help, we're all about helping them. I'm just trying to make it so we don't attract people from outside to come here to camp, basically.
All right, okay, thank you. So. Other ones you have, question?
Yeah, um. Alright, Cullen, so, I know the five hundred dollar fees on here, and like you said, they're indigent, maybe, um, exempt from that. But is it possible that we can lower that amount on our end?
Yeah. What I would say is if you consider lowering it, uh, do it as like, uh, like incremental, like first offense. Two hundred and fifty dollars, maybe second, second or subsequent offense, feed five hundred. So that obviously, if, if it's a repeat, then the penalty goes up with the subsequent offense.
Okay.
We go that way, we're continuing, I know of that, okay, thank you. Any other questions that you have on the side of?
So we got like a motion to manage?
Um, we could do that, or, I mean, it, it may just be cleaner, I could just want to put it on for the next meeting, I'll spring it to clean up, get the next meeting to do your first reading at the next meeting.
That's not good.
No, that's fine.
So then can we, um, when it's ready to approve of the agenda, do you want to do this item?
Uh, you don't have to, I think it's under discussion approval, so you can just discuss it, you don't have to move to approve it.
Okay, that's a fact, that's B, yeah, that's why I was not.
Next, we are going to approve of company water access. We can do that at regular meeting. Next, we're going to be asked to approve of the D D W carport.
Hey, David. Yeah, that's me, David. Casey's on the towel, towel, but it's sixty days, so you get me because I've been involved in this so far, so. Um, to start out with, David has approved all of his purchases, uh, he responds there to pay for them. Um, so, there's a couple of these that I can, I can say for sure, like the water treatment plant one, um, they currently have a, um. A box, basically, uh, shit, cargo, like a cargo container box. And, uh, it's a, it's rotting, it's falling apart, and so they need something to keep them over and some other items in down there, so that's what they're looking for down there. Cemetery, the same thing they have a lead to that's built on the building, it's falling down. Uh, after Jason looked at it, he said that it's way cheaper to do this than it is to put that out there. There's a couple of these where you say, where it says it'll be enclosed later, it's because it's cheaper restful by deciding and put it on when it was to buy it all and close. And so that's why it also set up that way. Uh, but mainly, this is to store equipment that you guys have already a lot of them purchased to keep it nicer, and so it's sitting outside, it could be, you know, kept inside where it's, they better care about the water control. Um, that's the purpose of the portions that they're looking for.
Mayor Johnson, yes, so, pardon me. If you're talking about patient thirty-nine, you saw the, the, the cup of each carport?
Yes.
Okay, so, can you use these words for me, because I have many people asking these questions, and I tell them, I said. When, um, Chief comes up here, interns, they have money in their own budget that they are allocated, they can allocate and they can buy it.
Correct.
Can you say approximately the higher amount that this would be, that we're going to do something lower? Say, for instance, in the cemetery?
Mm-hmm.
That would be a lot higher, correct? If we was to.
If they were, if they were to repair what they were going to put down there, or it was already down in the lead to it, it would be way more expensive than it is to purchase this, this is why they did it this way. If Jason can't find a deal on something, he's probably not doing it, so, I can trust Jason's deals I would get, because every time I try to find something on my own, it's way more expensive than he finds, so. Um, and he has the construction knowledge of how to do this stuff, and like I said, some of these have roll-up doors and sides already built on them. It's more, more because they eat it now and they don't have the time to do to work on it, but the ones that they do have the time, that, that carport will work for now, if they will close later, then that's what they're looking at. But like, the cemetery one in particular, that's out in public, really, it's not enclosed, fenced in area and so forth, so they need that sealed up now, and so that's probably the reason. I think the cemetery is one of the ones that was, yeah, they're doing enclosures and roll-up doors, so it's secure out there. Um, these, these carports, I don't know, I didn't know this until just recently, and Jason explained it to me, that they put anchors down in the ground, even when they're sitting on dirt that bolts it down, and you can't move them, the tornado is not going to pull it up. So they're secure once they're locked up, um, so what's inside of them is secure, and that's probably the reason I want the cemetery is already contained.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, guys. Um, Chief, um, we have approved several renovations and purchases and things like that. I'm not exactly sure we understand because we have the information here. Uh, I've been stopped, you know, several times walking down the street of, um, um. You know, activities in town, I'm not sure if the public understands that the money, we're not going in the hole, making things a mess and things like that. Um, this isn't money we use to repair a street, you know?
Well, I mean, in some set, in some situations, fourteen hundred dollars, ninety-nine for the street department, that, street funds could come out of that because it's part of the street fund thing.
Yeah.
But we need tools and equipment, and we need to be able to store that equipment, because that's part of what we have to pay for to go along with those type of things.
And we, I, I understand it, I have absolutely no, no problem, I trust, but you're, you know, bringing to us, you say it has been covered, we're not going in the hole. Is there a way to make, I don't know, a report or a statement in terms of where the money is coming from?
So the money for each of these will come out of those respective funds in the budget, so if it's in the cemetery, in, unless there's certain things, like sometimes solid waste. I- i- if they're storing an item that is used for solid waste, and solid waste could pay for some of it, and that's what they're doing it for. Um, solid waste fund has a lot of funds in it right now, that's where David's been getting some of that money from, I know. Uh, I'm not, I wasn't privy to the conversation about exactly where the funds were at with these, but David was very comfortable in purchasing this, had no issues with it, I spoke with him this morning about it. Uh, yeah, there's also funds that we weren't aware of, uh, that have been available the last couple of years, partly because interest rates went up so high. We're making five percent interest on a lot of investments right now, and so there's money coming in that we normally don't have coming in because the interest rates are so high. Um, I'm glad you're, that you're going to cut interest rates, but that doesn't help our situation, so part of me wishes they'd keep it higher so that we'd have money. Um, but, uh, so there's, there's funding mechanisms where money is coming in, we're spending a lot of money, there's a lot of money out there that's being spent, because they're going to have money that's coming in, so it just does seem like we're spending a lot of money. But I don't think we're spending a lot of money that we could be using for other things.
Right, yeah, I understand that, but. It's in kind of help better explain the city budget, we're going to start doing the budget, um, for twenty twenty-five here very soon. So, if you think of our cemetery fund, we have one fund, but within that fund, there are different line items.
Mm-hmm.
So there's an equipment line item, there's building, it repairs line item, it's wasn't likely. This, the monies that are being used for this app is coming from one of those line highlights, so it's not kind of taking away from other. Yes, yeah, um, but we'll have more in-depth discussions as we start reviewing and preparing.
And, and the main reason we come to you with these, uh, granted, it's forty thousand dollars overall.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and Jason knew this too, I mean, we could have put one down in the cemetery for thirteen, the city manager could have approved that if the money's in the budget. Uh, but these weren't items that we specifically had in the budget for this year. Uh, and they may have not spent money on one thing in order to get something for somewhere else, so those kind of things happen at times. My budget's all out of whack this year because we had grant money come in from a couple of years ago, and so we spent money on other things because we had the opportunity to do it, so, you know. But, but overall, it'll still be under budget from where we expected it to be at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, I, I understand, but how can we convey to the public? Um, maybe a report or maybe one of our meetings or?
Well, and, and really, part of what does that every year is the audit, when the audit's done, that shows where we were at the end of the year and the fact that everything was done properly. And so, we don't know that until May or June usually, but, you know, it takes that time to figure that out.
And I usually say that, you know, the last, my last conversation, I said, you know, well, well, within budget, we are not overspending, the monies that come in, and I hope they heard me.
Well, it's always nice to have David here to talk, but it's football season and he goes, he's a little bit Christy, so you're probably not going to see how many Monday nights was it really needs to be here, so.
Yeah, what I do is the reason I ask you to explain is I have to go back to the day.
Right.
When we talked about it, and I have you explain it, and I say, go back to the YouTube video on nine, three, or whatever date was, so that you can hear how they explain it, because if they didn't come down and they don't understand, it'd be hard to come back to that as a way to. And it helps us when we're trying to.
Oh, absolutely. And, and David's really good at it, he does, I don't know how we got so lucky to have such a great finance director, but, um. He does things that I don't understand all the time, you know, and so, um, it's nice to be able to have somebody that has the financial understanding that he has to go in and. Ask him questions and explain stuff, so I'm always very confident in what he tells me when it comes to budgeting and so forth. And, and when I was sitting in that chair, I had arguments when they would come to me about wanting to spend all that money that we spent for the last few months, and I was, I'm not a yes person when it comes to spending money, so I was like. You better show me where it's coming from, because we're not just spending money to spend money, but David would sit down and explain it all, very confident in his ability to make sure we're spending money the right way. Not overspending where we shouldn't be, so.
I, I, that's a good idea, I didn't think about going back and reviewing the, the tape, but, uh. To assure that, and there are some times, those moments that. So at this point, I do already get a public time, uh, public comment, so then maybe now we get a lot of standards or consults. We believe so, it's going to be named and added, and we're going to enjoy it.
Scott Avery, two four one seven seven, F R O G South, um, again, I'm not here in my capacity as a member of the board at Habitat Humanity, rather, uh, I'm here as an individual. Uh, advocating on the rights of the unhoused, um, here in Albany, um. I, I see that there has been some movement, however, is not captured right in the ordinance in and of itself, that hasn't changed. I didn't find one word change in that ordinance, so, um, again, I also look to see if there was an actual, you have the ordinance. You have a policy, or at least that I can find, so, um, what do, when we state, much like I stated last time. When we state that we're going to, within that pop, within that ordinance, we're going to offer human, or notify human services, doesn't say who the human service providers are, doesn't say. What levels the providers they are, you know, are they in town, are they out of town? And that all makes a huge difference, so I do see, you're saying that you have a, a relationship, uh, kicked in with the E D C, um, starting anyway. Uh, that's a, that seems like a good first movement, right, to understand, to solve a problem, you have to understand the problem. If you can't understand the problem, if you don't have numbers, and you don't know who people are, can't address that at any level. But a policy goes a long way, I also, the fines, even starting at two fifty, I mean, people without money just don't have money. Yeah, um, it's crazy that we're thinking about, you know, at that level, and even two fifty, even if they do. Get, there's no fines, they do run against their court costs. I still don't have a hundred dollars, I, I mean, I work with unhoused people five days a week, they don't have a hundred dollars, if they had a hundred dollars, they'd be somewhere, they'd have something. So, I don't quite get this disconnect. Um, it's two ships passing in the night and everyone's screaming, but no one's hearing each other, so, um, I think that a much more fleshed out. Idea that can then be presented to the public, you know, so you want, so that people. you know, so you want, so that people understand like we're, we are taking this in a serious manner, right? We, we aren't, the idea again of shuffling people from A to B because we're afraid they're going to be here. Well, they're going somewhere, you know, they're, I I don't know what, I'm not saying that Albany has all the resources. You know, and the kind of canard of Gavin Newsom in California having, you know, uh, addressing issues with homelessness in California, that has a lot to do with arguments between the state and municipalities. It's not that he's separate homeless, but he's, you know, the idea is that there needs to be some so form of communication between state government and municipal government. That's not happening, hasn't been happening for a very long time. So, um, we've got on in with my three minutes, so I will, I'll leave it at that.
Good evening, everybody. Madam Mayor, council members, City Manager Snyder, Cliff Domingo. Folks here in attendance and those watching this evening, good evening. Gary Tompkins, candidate for County Commissioner of the Seventh District. Yeah, I mean, hopefully you have this read, it's really, it's actually, exactly. And as I'm getting clocked, I'm, I'm not used to that. So I'm going to go myself, going to get full of focus. Well, it's great to see you this evening and I want to start a couple of things first and not necessarily, I don't want to talk about myself this evening because a couple of events that have happened certainly in the city of Albany that have really touched my heart. Uh, first one being the passing of Mr. Rob, Ms. Jackson, certainly, the ones to you and your family, uh, when I heard of the passing it. I, I, I know where I was at, it's almost like I knew where I was at at the time when I heard that. And, uh, I met him at his hundredth birthday party. Over the next six years, I got to know him at different events and all kinds of things. Best dresser that you could ever imagine, a lot better dresser than me, and you know how I like to dress, right? But he could do it and, uh, always with a smile, always just so kind and gentle. And, uh, we lost an icon, we lost an icon in this community. But he will be forever remembered for all of us. And, uh, I'm, I'm better for knowing him, having a chance. Oh, I only got to know him for six years. Maybe you got to know him for a lot longer, but I feel like I knew him for a lifetime, so. Certainly, again, my condolences to the family, certainly. I won't forget that as, well, I, my guy, I saw that his cards, all his cards, he always gave me a card, right? He always gave you a card and I always make sure I have. Uh, matter of fact, he's on my Kia pain letters or two again, as a matter of fact, there he is because he deserves to be, he's a wonderful individual. Second thing, I only got, I have twenty, what's going on, guys? Uh, second thing, certainly want to reach out to express my, uh, just appreciation to Mr. Cascarelli. As I understand it, Mr. Cascarelli, Cascarelli is closed now. Um, I was unaware of that happening, I heard of that, that certainly a hundred sixteen plus years of business in, in this community. And, uh, certainly we appreciate everything that he did, certainly, and, again, that hundred sixteen years of his family, certainly. Um, and I do apologize for my, my tired tonight, I'm, I'm actually coaching my son's football team too as well. So that's why you don't see me in my normal garb actually this evening. But, uh, first of all, we'll finish off in the last forty seconds is, is sixty-three days to the election, November fifth. Uh, and you will have a choice to make. Um, certainly, you guys know my record of the past, over the six years in which I represented not only the city of Albany, but certainly the district of, our district we, we took, we live in. And I'll tell you, I had as much fun and enjoyment of being able to certainly represent the city of Albany in a place where my dad grew up. My dad was born and raised here and grew up and, uh, obviously he's no longer with us, but, uh, really take it to heart. If there was representing city value means a lot to me, as well as the eastern side of Calvin County. And we just need to make sure that we keep a very, very strong voice on the eastern side of Calvin County. So it will never be forgotten and we always got a place at the table. So with that being said, so appreciate you guys' support on November fifth and the forward, build that relationship. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Is there anybody else that would like to stand and address something? Thank you all, the clear, I'm watching you again, so I'll support. Oh, did I say aye?
Aye.
I propose. I mean, the journey, so, no, yeah.